I told you you needed to have leadership. It was just like, I couldn't eat that. So. I had a little more food. It's like protein, like I couldn't eat that. So. I don't know if that's all right. I know. Wait, what's your first line? Stacy Thompson. I know the name is about, about keeping our. It's a little weird. Three, yes.
It's in us.
We're gonna go to the house. So. Yeah, that's fine. She's gonna step up. Well, it's easier because you. I guess if we go like. Yeah, I just, I just mean. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Done. The LTC sets that up.
How do you whisper? I swear.
LTC should.
You might be better not having her. She wants to like. Wait, can you block that? That's not supposed to happen. Just wait, that's all I'm saying. Right now. Is that too far? Tell her, tell her she has to get out of here.
Ready?
It's not too far. I know, I know. Okay, tell her to get out of here. All right. Come on down.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for October 30th Equity and Access Subcommittee. Madam Secretary, can you please do the roll?
Chairperson Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Ms. Lay? One absent, two present.
I'm really excited to have this particular Subcommittee because there's a lot of material to go over. I will, just because there's so much information and we've had a little bit of context, for those of you who are viewing this, this is all on the site, so please do take advantage of all the information. There's a lot of real, great background information that you should really dig into. So, we're gonna do a deep data dive today, so for all of you who just love data, this is the Subcommittee for you. With that, Ms. Phillips, I'm going to hand it over to you, so we can get started.
Okay, thank you, School Committee member Stacy Thompson. So, we're here to talk about disaggregated data in our district, and you are correct that we did provide a lot of data. And just so everyone knows what was provided and who's here with me, I do have our Director of Data here, Abby Anderson, and I also have our Chief Academic Officer, Robin Desmond, and I believe we also have a speaker signed up. And I know the speaker had shared a time concern, but, but I'm happy to jump into the data dive if you.
I will relinquish if you feel that you'd like the speaker to speak, and I know, I believe Ms. Desmond also has a time constraint as well.
Okay.
So, if you could just introduce what point he is speaking to, that'd be fantastic. And then, when you come up, sir, if you could introduce yourself, and you have five minutes to speak, and we would love to hear what you have to share. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Thompson. And so, we have Vladimir Saldana with us. He is the facilitator of the Hispanic Student Success Task Force, and I believe he's here to bring a message on behalf of the task force as relates to the first agenda item.
Thank you for accommodating a young dad that has to run home. So, I bring a message on behalf of the Hispanic Student Task Force. So, Honorable Members of the Equity Subcommittee, I stand before you today, and I'm sorry, I'm looking at my phone, but I have to read it out loud. I stand before you today as a representative for the Hispanic Student Task Force in support of the School Committee member Stacy Thompson's motion to desegregate the data relevant to Hispanic students, Hispanic Latino students. As you know, Hispanic Latinos students account for almost 40% or more of the Lowell Public School students' population, and are disproportionately the representative in many of the success outcomes measured by the district and Commonwealth. The Lowell Public School Equity Office started the Hispanic Student Task Force, HSST, and called upon organizations and leaders to create a coalition of stakeholders united in a vision to work toward eliminating the opportunity gaps impacting Hispanic slash Latino students in support of the overall success of the students within Lowell Public Schools. For the past two years, the task force has centered on elevating the voices of the Hispanic Latino community in Lowell to obtain feedback on needed current issues and policies impacting Latino student success and identifying strategies to support students based on the input of these integral stakeholders. As the HSST is starting to develop its work plan with strategic goals and measurable outcomes, data is the cornerstone to making those informed decisions. This is why we strongly support this motion. It's a commitment to the future of our students and the betterment of our education, educational institution. Thank you for your time, dedication, and service to our students and family. We encourage you to continue your focus on this very urgent matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Saldana, and that's more for your wife that I'm sure is watching those two children, that, that you're able to go home, so thank you very much. What he just spoke to is really important information. I mean, I think the whole purpose, and I know my counterparts agree, is accountability for the numbers and looking at where we are, so we're gonna dive right into this. I believe that Ms. Desmond also has a time commitment issue, so I would love for her to be able to share what it is she has to share in accordance with what we're speaking about tonight.
Thank you. I'm here to talk a little bit about something that was included in your packet, which is the district prioritization submission. This submission document is something that we are required as a district to complete based on schools that have been identified as in need of assistance with the state, based on the MCAS scores, and looking at our data district-wide. And when we look at our data, our data district-wide, and in particular, the schools that are, that are identified as in needs of assistance, we're seeing disproportionate results, in particular with the subgroup that the state identifies as Hispanic. And so, last year, 21, 22, we created a prioritization document that focused in particular on strengthening our Tier One instruction, so what is going on in the classroom at grade level in all content areas. And within that document, we identified student engagement as a priority in all of our lessons. So, you know, the way that we know students are doing well is by how they engage in the lesson, their oral discourse, how they share their thinking, and the elements that we need to consider as educators that are built into all lessons to support that student engagement. This year, when we came back to the prioritization document for the 23-24 school year, and again, we do this every spring as a, as an exercise with the Department of Ed because we have schools that are in need of assistance, we couldn't help but see how large the gap is with our students that the state identifies as Hispanic. And so, this year, our prioritization document is still the same focus, but we have embedded within the focus to always be looking at the data of our students that the state identifies as Hispanic, and always look at ways in which we can commit to differentiating and prioritizing that subgroup so that we are ensuring that they're making the gains of their peers. And so, when we were looking at some of the data you'll see today, that helped us to drive this document, so that everything that we do, we stop and look at that subgroup to make sure that what we are doing reaches that subgroup. So, when we are professionally developing leaders at leadership, that's one data point that we continually point out. When we are working with professional development with teachers, that's something that we draw their attention to, to focus on, is the subgroup that just continually seems to be not making the same gains as the peer group within the district. So, that is included in your packet, and if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them. But again, it was all based on data, in particular, the schools that are identified as in need of assistance. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Phillips to speak to the other pieces that also we are focusing on as a district for this particular subgroup.
Sure. So, so Ms. Anderson created for us a data document that I needed my reading glasses for, and it does cover all of the major reporting areas that the district reports to the state. So, in that, you will see attendance rate, you'll see dropout rate, you'll see chronic absenteeism, you'll see MCAS scores, and, and MCAS growth scores, right? In the online link that I shared, that's where you'll see trend data, looking at how students were doing from 2017 through 2022. So, we do see some improvements, but generally, the trends are maintained. And so, the question is, what are we going to do differently to kind of, not kind of, to address these, these gaps, these gap areas? And Ms. Desmond shared one of the district's prioritization plans, but I wanted to share with you today, in addition to answering any questions you have, some takeaways from the State of Latino Education Report that UMass Lowell conducted on behalf of the school district and, and in partnership with Fortaleza. So, I want to just take us through some highlights in the document, and if you look at page three of the executive summary, that is really where the, the data relating to Hispanic Latino students is summarized. So, I think the first part that I want to mention is that while at the, the data that was collected ended 21, 22, so I do need to acknowledge that, that this data is a year behind, but we haven't seen any, any significant changes, although Ms. Desmond could speak a little to dropout, dropout rate successes, I believe, but otherwise, we haven't seen a whole lot of, of change. But here in the presentation, the researchers identified that our overall population at the point of this report had decreased by about 3%, but the Hispanic Latino population had actually increased by almost 15%. And then, in the, the second bullet, they identified that while about 38% of the district was Hispanic Latino at that time, we actually have six schools at that time that had 50% or more Latino students, right? And those six schools that had been identified were Le Blank Therapeutic Day School, the Robinson, the Moody Elementary School, McAvenue, McCalliv, and the Greenhenge. And then, we had quite a few other schools that are above 40%, given that our district-wide average is almost 40%. In the report, it also acknowledged that in the 21-22 school year, 85% of school faculty were white, and only 7% were Hispanic Latino. Our school district has a very large English learner or multilingual learner population, and through the data that they collected, which was largely public data, they had identified that around 48% identify as Hispanic Latino, and that the most common language for else is Spanish, and they had identified about 39% of our English learners speak Spanish. And they are representing 53 different countries, and at the time of the report, the Moody School had the most English learners in their population. So, now that we understood the population, we looked at the student rates. And so, the, the student rates and academic and accountability data, that starts on page four. And when we looked at attendance, we saw that Hispanic Latino students were attending district-wide 87.5% of the time compared to 89.7% of the district. So, our students were lagging in, in attendance. Looking at the dropout rate, we saw 4.7% Hispanic Latino dropout rate compared to 2.7% of the district. We saw a higher rate of students being retained from one grade to the next, and we saw a grade nine pass rate of almost 32% of Hispanic Latino ninth-grade students were passing all of their classes. And this is compared to a district rate of 46.1%. Now, again, the data was pulled 21-22, but again, the trends, while we may see some changes, the trends are still there in, in low ninth-grade completion rate. And then, advanced course completion, we saw 34% Hispanic Latino students completing advanced coursework compared to 53% of the district. If we go on to look at the graduation rate, the four-year graduation rate, we saw 68% of Hispanic Latino students graduating in four years compared to 80% of their district counterparts. And then, for the five-year, it improved. 78% of Hispanic Latino students graduated as compared to 83% of the rest of the district. And then, the last pieces of data I want to highlight are the discipline rates. So, in 21-22, 52% of the discipline rates of students disciplined were Hispanic Latino, and again, Hispanic Latino students are about 40% of the population. So, I think in this snapshot of data, the report was hoping to illustrate that our largest student group is being underserved in many areas and are, are failing in success measures and are overrepresented in some of our, what will we call them? The non-success measures, the negative measures? Right? Discipline, attendance. So, the question is, what, what do we do about it? Part of the solution of what we do about it, one, is disaggregating the data, and I do believe, Ms. Thompson, that, that you made the request that when we give you data reports, let's look at disaggregated data. You know, when we celebrate our improvements and wins, as we should, let's disaggregate them and make sure that everyone's improving and that, that certain populations are not just getting caught up in averages. And so, that is a step we have taken. I do believe we also included, included the accountability report, which includes disaggregated data, and I believe moving forward, that's an expectation that you can have as we report out on key, key indicators. And then, also, as Mr. Saldana reported on the Hispanic Student Success Task Force, that is a, that is a task force that was brought together of families, community members, to be a part of, of advising the district and co-creating some goals and solutions, so doing the work together. And so, through our work with the Hispanic Student Success Task Force, we currently had identified three subcommittees. One Subcommittee was Family Community Engagement around targeting that ninth-grade population. So, we said, we can't, we can't do everything in one year, but maybe we could learn together some things that we can do differently. So, given that ninth grade is such a critical year to see, you know, less than 40% of students completing all of the credits that are needed to graduate, we said, we'll tackle that together. We also are looking at student engagement, and what is it that our Hispanic Latino students would like to see differently in their studies, not only during their classes, their daytime activities, but also after-school activities, also staffing, like what, what would change the entire environment to help our Latino students be more successful? And then, we're also looking at bilingual, multilingual opportunities, and are there opportunities for, specifically for dual language, which is not going to solve, you know, the, the challenges of English learners, but is just adding to more opportunities for, you know, a broader portfolio of, of learning opportunities? And just elevating heritage language, elevating, you know, our family's home languages as, as assets, and not just as something to be remedied.
Absolutely. So, first of all, I want to thank you both for giving, or all three of you, sorry. I was looking over here. Obviously not forgetting Ms. Desmond. Thank you for all of this information. I mean, I think for me, I asked for disaggregated data, and you gave me disaggregated data, without a doubt. And there's still more information, believe it or not, that I still want, if it's even possible. But before I ask my questions, because I do have a few questions, I'm going to give it to my colleagues. If you have any questions, Mr. Lay?
Thanks, thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a bunch, actually. I'm just curious, when, when you did the study, did you compare the data just within Lowell Public School, or you compared that to the states as well, and maybe nationwide, nationwide also? That's, that's the question. And, and also, I'm wondering, what is the cause that make the quote-unquote Hispanic students have all those negative high number, higher number than the other subgroups? Is that something happened in their personal, or, or something in the family, or was it language barrier that, that make them having a more difficulty time in school? Then, then my next question would be, would increasing the number of Hispanic-speaking staffs in the school, would that help? Or can we make the exception whether some teachers? I know Amtel is the culprit of a gateway to keep a, a second language people from becoming teachers. I don't know if we should be able to waive a certain, a few numbers per school just to get them in? Would that be possible? So, that, those are the things that run through my mind when I hear all of this. So, thank you for, that, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Do you want to call, kind of get down all that questions first and then respond at one time? Okay. Ms. Dougherty, do you have any questions? They're gonna take all of our questions.
Okay. Thank you, and I think that the report does show us, really, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, even looking at the, the pass rate for ninth graders in general, we could say, okay, 32% of the Latino population is passing, that's really low. But even the general, when you put it all together, and it's not huge, I just lost it, though, I had it here, 40-something. Yeah, 46. Not where we want to be. I guess I've got a question and then a comment. So, when we talk about attendance, and that's on page four, at the top of the floor, top of the page, it sounds like we get decent attendance rates, right? You're talking about the Hispanic population is a little bit lower, 87.5, while the fair, the district had 89.7, but that's not chronic absenteeism. So, that's really not getting to the crux of the problem for, I would think that many of those kids who are chronically absent are the ones that aren't passing their classes, that aren't engaged. So, I, I don't know if it was here, and it just didn't jump out at me, but I think we should be following the chronic absenteeism and really looking to turn that around, but also see it as a way of judging, are we making progress with student engagement? Because when you look at the recommendations, and I, I totally support this idea. We have been trying to increase the diversity of our staff so that our kids are looking and being taught by people who they can connect to, that there's a similarity, whatever, culture, all that is a positive thing. But that in itself, I don't think is gonna move the needle the way we need to move it. So, I, I look at all these recommendations, and they seem to be bilingual staff. Again, I'm not against that, but where, I mean, is that bilingual staff gonna naturally feed into engaging? And I know, I see Ms. Desmond has her hand up, and I'm probably, we're gonna be talking about curriculum that connects to students more too, right? That culturally sensitive. And I remember with my own experience, when my son was in middle school, he just hit on a teacher in the sixth grade that figured out his interests and gave him books to read that he cared about, as opposed to just read something to read something. And so, so I am interested in looking at how we're gonna really examine this data and really tackle it from a number of fronts. And then, the last thing that kind of hit me was, we talk about bullying, and I know, I hear a lot from families, and I'm sure you do, you know, parents calling me, my child doesn't want to be at this school, he doesn't feel safe, she's being bullied, whatever the situation. But it really was like to have the report say, students and parents feel that bullying is a problem, but the staff only discuss it minimally. Like, how do we raise awareness within the community of our staff? And I know some of it is, it's happening in different ways than we knew when we were in school, like social media and all that, but I think it really is at the heart of the whole, just like chronic absenteeism is a, like shining symptom of lack of engagement, bullying is also a reason for lack of engagement. If you don't feel that you are in a safe, supportive environment, and I don't know that there's an easy solution for helping kids to be kinder to each other, it, it's not something that can really always be top-down, but those are just some things that jumped out to me, and I think this is absolutely the work we have to be doing. So, I really appreciate the effort that's gone into really bluntly saying.
That's an expectation that you can have as we report out on key indicators. And then also, as Mr. Saldana reported on the Hispanic Student Success Task Force, that is a task force that was brought together of families, community members, to be a part of advising the district and co-creating some goals and solutions, so doing the work together. And so through our work with the Hispanic Student Success Task Force, we currently had identified three subcommittees. One subcommittee was family community engagement around targeting that ninth grade population. So we said, "We can't do everything in one year, but maybe we could learn together some things that we can do differently." So given that ninth grade is such a critical year, to see, you know, less than 40% of students completing all of the credits that are needed to graduate, we said, "We'll tackle that together." We also are looking at student engagement, and what is it that our Hispanic Latino students would like to see differently in their studies, not only during their classes, their daytime activities, but also after-school activities, also staffing? Like, what would change the entire environment to help our Latino students be more successful? And then we're also looking at bilingual, multilingual opportunities, and are there opportunities specifically for dual language, which is not going to solve, you know, the challenges of English learners, but is just adding to more opportunities for, you know, a broader portfolio of learning opportunities? And just elevating heritage language, elevating, you know, our families' home languages as assets, and not just as something to be remedied.
Absolutely. So first of all, I want to thank you both for giving, or all three of you, sorry. I was looking over here. Obviously not forgetting Ms. Desmond. Thank you for all of this information. I mean, I think for me, I asked for disaggregated data, and you gave me disaggregated data, without a doubt. And there's still more information, believe it or not, that I still want, if it's even possible. But before I ask my questions, because I do have a few questions, I'm going to give it to my colleagues. If you have any questions, Mr. Lay?
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a bunch, actually. I'm just curious, when you did the study, did you compare the data just within low-public school, or you compared that to the states as well, and maybe nationwide also? That's the question. And also, I'm wondering, what is the cause that make the quote-unquote Hispanic students have all those negative high number, higher number than the other subgroups? Is that something happened in their personal, or something in the family, or was it language barrier that make them having a more difficulty time in school? Then my next question would be, would increasing the number of Hispanic-speaking staffs in the school, would that help? Or can we make the exception whether some teachers? I know Umtel is the culprit of a gateway to keep a second language people from becoming teachers. I don't know if we should be able to waive a certain, a few numbers per school, just to get them in. Would that be possible? So that, those are the things that run through my mind when I hear all of this. So thank you for, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Do you want to kind of get down all that questions first, and then respond at one time? Okay. Ms. Doherty, do you have any questions? They're going to take all of our questions.
Okay. Thank you. And I think that the report does show us, really, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Even looking at the pass rate for ninth graders in general, we could say, okay, 32% of the Latino population is passing. That's really low. But even the general, when you put it all together, and it's not huge, I just lost it, though, I had it here, forty-something.
Forty-something, yeah.
Yeah, forty-six. Not where we want to be. I guess I've got a question, and then a comment. So when we talk about attendance, and that's on page four, at the top of the page, it sounds like we get decent attendance rates, right? You're talking about the Hispanic population is a little bit lower, 87.5, while the fair, the district had an 89.7. But that's not chronic absenteeism. So that's really not getting to the crux of the problem for, I would think that many of those kids who are chronically absent are the ones that aren't passing their classes, that aren't engaged. So I don't know if it was here, and it just didn't jump out at me, but I think we should be following the chronic absenteeism, and really looking to turn that around, but also see it as a way of judging, are we making progress with student engagement? Because when you look at the recommendations, and I totally support this idea. We have been trying to increase the diversity of our staff, so that our kids are looking and being taught by people who they can connect to, that there's a similarity, whatever, culture, all that is a positive thing. But that in itself, I don't think is going to move the needle the way we need to move it. So I look at all these recommendations, and they seem to be bilingual staff. Again, I'm not against that, but where, I mean, is that bilingual staff going to naturally feed into engaging? And I know, I see Ms. Desmond has her hand up, and probably we're going to be talking about curriculum that connects to students more too, right? That culturally sensitive. And I remember with my own experience, when my son was in middle school, he just hit on a teacher in the sixth grade that figured out his interests, and gave him books to read that he cared about, as opposed to just read something to read something. And so I am interested in looking at how we're going to really examine this data, and really tackle it from a number of fronts. And then the last thing that kind of hit me was, we talk about bullying, and I know, I hear a lot from families, and I'm sure you do, you know, parents calling me, "My child doesn't want to be at this school, he doesn't feel safe, she's being bullied," whatever the situation. But it really was like, to have the report say, "Students and parents feel that bullying is a problem, but the staff only discuss it minimally." Like, how do we raise awareness within the community of our staff? And I know some of it is, it's happening in different ways than we knew when we were in school, like social media and all that. But I think it really is at the heart of the whole, just like chronic absenteeism is like shining symptom of lack of engagement, bullying is also a reason for lack of engagement. If you don't feel that you are in a safe, supportive environment. And I don't know that there's an easy solution for helping kids to be kinder to each other. It's not something that can really always be top-down. But those are just some things that jumped out to me, and I think this is absolutely the work we have to be doing. So I really appreciate the effort that's gone into really bluntly saying, "These are the numbers, this is what the data is telling," and it's shocking, it is. But then also to be as equally laser-focused on what we're going to do about it. Thanks.
I know Ms. Desmond has to go, so I would love for you to be able to respond too.
Well, I just wanted to respond to Ms. Doherty's point, because as a former school principal, one of the key ways that we were able to turn the school around was to ensure that every student was there every day. If you're not there to hear and comprehend what's going on in the classroom, every time you come back, you're that much further behind, and it's really hard to catch up. But we have most recently combined our Student Resource Center with our Attendance Office, because they really function in a very similar way. Our Student Resource Center seeks out students who've dropped off the roles, essentially dropouts, and have re-engaged them, and reduced the dropout rate significantly in just last year. I don't have the exact number, because it has to be released by the state, so I don't want to say something that's not accurate. But we have reduced the dropout rate significantly in one year of running this program, thanks to Lauren Campion and the hard work that that team has done. But we have now combined the Attendance Office, Heather Ganley, Stephanie Day, and some of our Attendance monitors, who I think you met at our last School Committee meeting, two of whom are bilingual, speaking Spanish, one of whom speaks Spanish and Portuguese and English, to get out to the houses, make connections with families, and really encourage kids to come back to school. We also have, in recognizing our ninth grade completion rate is significantly lower, the Special Ed Office has contracted with McLean Hospital in a special grant-funded program. We did this last spring, and we've just initiated it this year, where we are training all of our support staff, in the ninth grade in particular, on school avoidance behaviors. Because what we have found is that attendance is not simply, "I don't want to go anymore, I don't like school." There's anxiety, there's other factors that affect students avoiding coming to school. And so we really felt like a comprehensive approach to attendance, bringing back dropouts, and having staff keenly aware of some of the school avoidance behaviors, that all of those things will contribute to students coming back to school. And again, our most marginalized students make up the biggest proportion of these numbers. And so that's why, in this conversation here today, it's so important, when we're talking about equity, to really target the needs of students who are typically marginalized in society, and help support them back into school. And so I also agree with everything else that's being said, but that is just one thing that, where you brought up attendance, I just think is so important for our students to have access.
Thank you so much for that. Just to add on to the questions, I'm not sure if you're continuing to write the questions. But from this report, which I believe is your report, this one, this one talks, there's on page 10, information about the dropout rate over a year. And I guess I'm curious about, and maybe this is clear for everybody else, but when you have a section called "High Needs," and then you have a variety of other sections that I think might be absorbed in that, can you kind of express to me what that means, what "high needs" means in kind of in separation from the other ones, which I would consider "high needs," I guess?
And I'd like to have Ms. Anderson answer that one.
It's the same kind of subject header that you have on each of the areas. You have it on graduation rate, too. It says "all students," and then starts with "high needs," and then "economically disadvantaged," so on and so forth. So I guess I was kind of curious if, like, somebody who's economically disadvantaged is absorbed in "high needs" as well? What that, what "high needs" in itself kind of expresses? And then I can ask my other questions based on that.
So a student has "high needs" if they're designated as either low-income, an EL, economically disadvantaged, a student with disability. So it's a makeup of all of those different reporting groups. So it's important, when we're looking at the data and the different categories, is that students can make up multiple categories. So you can't, for example, you could be an economically disadvantaged student, an AL, and a student with disabilities. So you would count in all three of those categories, not just one.
I guess I'm curious why we need that section of "high needs." And the reason why I ask that is because for me, I won't say it was confusing, I kind of thought that that's what it was. But I'm curious if there's a reason why we pop them all together, maybe it's a grant-specific. But I'm just curious, because I think it's easier to kind of see each kind of area separated.
So through the data reporting that we do three times a year, through our student information reporting, in October, March, and the end of year, it's basically calculated on the number of high-need students divided by the adjusted enrollment. It's one of the reporting categories that DUCY uses. If you, I know that, I believe last week, or the last School Committee meeting, when the KPIs were shared out, "High Needs" is not one of the categories that we're disaggregating. But because this was a state report that comes from the DUCY profile, we wanted to report out on all of the different reporting groups. So if that's something that you're not interested, we don't have to include it, but we did for this report.
Yeah, no, it's fine if it's consistent with the state. I just wanted to know what the specific was. Now, my question's just to add to the list of questions, and then you guys can go through. The responses did go to this form, which has the lovely color on the back, which I appreciate, because I like when there's separation that way. This really, to me, is probably one of the more important kind of indicators, because it tells me, based on the school, what's happening. And for me, and I know for my colleagues, we talk about equity in the schools, and this points out areas where specifically a school is in one place or another. And this goes back to, I know where people are saying, you know, "We want to have things like neighborhood schools," and this is where I have issue, right? Because neighborhood schools are fine if all the schools are at the same level, right? And where we're, what we're looking at, if I can look at, for example, you have the Maury, the Bailey, the Daley, all in Highlands, right? All doing well. We have the Pawtucketville Schools, the Wang, the McAvenue, Pawtucketville Memorial, all doing well. So if you live in Pawtucketville, the Highlands, you're good, right? You want your kids to go to those schools. You want, but every other person wants their kids to go to those schools, too. So for me, looking at this, this kind of spelled out an in-your-face example of why there's a concern about making, bringing our schools up. So I appreciated this, because this, for me, is an accountability matrix. And it really says to us, okay, we have to come up to all the levels in all the schools, because equity, again, just means everybody gets what they need, right? So I just want to say, I really appreciated this particular document. What I was curious about, where it says, "Requiring assistance or intervention," however, and I forget which school it was, it was the Stocklosa. So it says, "Requiring assistance or intervention," but then it says, "moderate progress towards targets." So what determines if they're still, was it that they were so low in areas, but now they're making really great strides, but they're still in that requiring? Could you just kind of explain that a little bit? Thank you.
So it could be based on a specific subgroup, that they're not meeting the accountability target. They could be meeting their target, but be low within a certain subgroup. So they're, according to how the state creates the ranges, they've fallen within that range. However, a subgroup could be pulling them into needing further assistance.
And I think this is where you have to look to see, to Ms. Phillips's point earlier, how many of our Latino, Hispanic people fall into the schools that are potentially bringing down those numbers, where they're making great strides, but they're still requiring assistance. And I think for me, if you can like literally plug and play, and I think you did that somewhere, plug and play, okay, this is how many of, you know, this particular population we have in the school, this is how it's affecting, and that's why the numbers are reading like this. This, I think, is something the public would be able to easily disaggregate, because a lot of the other stuff is really in the weeds, right? Which I appreciate, because I think it's important and necessary. But I think this is very clear to see, this is how my child's school is doing. And I think that that's an important thing. So I appreciate that and the explanation behind it. Now, I'm going to relinquish, because I'm trying to keep this within time, we have about 20 minutes left. If, I will let Ms. Phillips, as well as yourself, answer, Ms. Anderson, I'm sorry, you do have a name. Ms. Anderson, answer any of the questions that we did lay out for you. Thank you.
So Mr. Lay asked some very deep questions, and I'm going to provide you with some responses as to what I see, but I also want to acknowledge that this is some of the deep work of the Hispanic Student Success Task Force with the district, to really try to understand families' wants and hopes, students' wants and hopes, so that we can craft the education that they need in order to be able to succeed, right? So when you ask Mr. Lay, you know, "What is the cause? How did this happen?" This is, this is a question districts across the whole United States are asking, especially around Black and Latino students, right? How did this happen? And I think one piece is that if we weren't disaggregating data, we're not truly understanding the problem for years on end. So if this is the first time we're looking at disaggregated data, and it hasn't been a part of our process for, you know, the last five years, the last 10 years, the problem has just been perpetuating itself, the gap has been growing, and we have not seen who wasn't growing within the gap. So I think that's, you know, a first big thing. And then two, once we know that groups aren't being successful in our system, then we have to do the self-reflection on what needs to happen differently. And that's, that's a very tricky question, you know? That's, that's reaching out to students and understanding, how are they feeling engaged in their classroom? Are they excited by what they're learning? Because, you know, I guess, you know, in some ways, I'm a little old-school, and I'm like, "I was a teacher, you know, you come, and then we're going to have a class, and I'm going to give you everything I have, and we're going to learn, we're going to do this," you know? But we do need to pause. We need to continuously pause and ask our students, "How are you experiencing your education? And what, what could I do differently?" Because a lot of what happens is in the classroom, you know, that's what we control. There are other factors that we also need to be aware of and address, which is why we have a community schools program, right? So it's, if you're coming to school and you're experiencing things, you know, at home, you come to school with different needs that need to be addressed, and we need to acknowledge this. Not set lower expectations, but acknowledge, you know, that there are other factors going on, and in order for me to help you be successful, I need to think about your mental health, I need to think about your social-emotional learning, and I need to think about, are you excited by what I'm teaching you in the classroom? You know, do you see the vision for your future? Do you see, you know, what you can achieve? And so I think those are parts that we are trying to do that work with our students' families and community now. The sense of belonging data is important, and a lot of, you know, our schools are doing, you know, those sense of belonging surveys, the HALLS survey, that's what it's called, where we are asking you, you know, "How are you feeling connected to school?" Right? And if, and if we are seeing that we are in the lower percentile of connecting, our students aren't going to fully learn in an environment where they do not feel, where they do not feel connected, where they not feel, you know, emotionally invested in, emotionally safe within. So those are some of the steps we are taking, but as relates to Hispanic Latino students, it's important for us to, to make sure that we are not just having, you know, a general one-size-fits-all, but that we are really looking, keeping our eye on, on this student group. When we talk about increasing staff numbers, and would it help? I think when we did the landscape analysis with TNTP last year, and they had shared data around when you have, you know, students of color and teachers of color, these are factors that result in higher graduation rates, higher college-going rates. That's not to say that that's going to solve everything, but when we talk about doing something differently, bringing different ideas and lived experiences to the table helps with that, right? So even though I am, you know, an educator of color, I come from different communities than here, I still had to learn and understand what our students are experiencing from, you know, the experiences, the lived experiences they have. So I think, you know, for us, we have to continue to be reflective on our own practice, be open to, to trying new things, and consistently keeping our eye on, on, you know, data, which includes sense of belonging.
Then I, that leads me into another question. I don't know, we could answer tonight, or we need a curriculum to answer that. But question, another question is, could we track whether social promotion would feed into this chronic absence, the future chronic absence? So I don't know if students don't feel belonged, don't feel like they, they are capable, if we keep on letting them go into higher grades. And then later on, they're acting up, they do something just to, just to get out of the class, or skip class completely, because they feel embarrassed, or they feel like they're falling behind. So I'm just wondering if that's something that we can look into also.
Yes, and I definitely would want to talk with my colleague and team, but, but you're right, and especially the higher your grade, and the more skills deficits you have, you need support, and you need encouragement, and to, to know that we're invested in you and to not give up. So, and those are like constant messages that need to be given for our students who are, you know, several grade levels behind.
So just two quick things, and this is kind of in league with what Mr. Lay was just mentioning, so additional things for you to think about, because as you know, I like more data. Ms. Anderson's like, "Thanks so much." But I had mentioned this before, and I know we're talking about the ninth grade, and we were using that kind of as our banner to figure out success, and how students should move on. I had mentioned that I think we should do it in the eighth grade. And the reason why is because they're already in the ninth grade, they're already having to adjust to the new school. I figure there's something that we're missing in the eighth grade, so that transition from eighth to ninth grade is tough in general. I mean, it was not an easy transition for me, but in general, that's tough. But I think that we're missing something that is, because a lot of these students, if we look at what their past was, successful. And then there's something that just happens in ninth grade. And there's lots, there's lots of different conditioning that happens when you enter into the ninth grade, obviously. But I think that that's something that we should look at. So if we can really pinpoint change from eighth grade to ninth grade, like what we're seeing specifically in the Hispanic, Latino, that kind of subcategory, that'd be really, I think, helpful. And then the other one, which I know is difficult, but Ms. Anderson, I believe in you, McKinney-Vento numbers. I really want access to what is happening with those students, and I know it's hard to track, because they drop off and come back on, and it's a little more ambiguous. But I was really curious about the graduation rates. I had mentioned that prior. So if we could kind of do something specific towards that end, I think that'd be really helpful in us kind of, are we helping? I mean, we do a lot of transportation, that's great, we can throw transportation at people, but are we helping them to make sure they graduate? Is my bigger concern. So that as well.
And Ms. Thompson, I wanted to mention that I met with the Hispanic Student Success Task Force, because we are intent on, on the recommendations, you know, that action steps are taken, right? Especially actions, action steps that we can take together. And so I think somewhere down the road... And so I think somewhere down the road, the task force is hoping to be able to share some of the work that, that it's doing, and some of the hopes and expectations that it also has for, for, for the public schools.
Excellent. I think we more than welcome them to come to a subcommittee meeting, and generally a larger meeting. I think it's important for us to see what our partners are looking, are expecting from us, and what we can, you know, again, hold each other accountable so we can move these numbers up. So I know we only have a few minutes left. I would just like to do a kind of a overview, I guess, of the incident report. To Ms. Dougherty's point, I can't go anywhere. Now they call me the bullying lady. I don't know if I should like that or not like that, but that's like, you're the bullying lady. I'm like, okay. Because I do a lot of work, obviously, at the dashboard. These numbers just are bad. They're really bad. The middle school number is super concerning. I was stopped the other day by a parent. And to Ms. Martin's point about, specifically about what's in that report, about how the students and the parents are really concerned, but there's a minimal kind of affect with the staff. What I was told by a grandmother was, that kind of cares for her grandchild, was saying that, the teacher said, well, I didn't see it. So what do you expect me to do? That's what, that was the response that they gave to the child that had experienced this bullying situation. And so I think that it's really important for there to be some measure of training, because again, we have lots of reports that are coming in, we are seeing that lots of reports are without finding, I forget what the exact word, word is, that, it's not that the incident didn't happen, but again, the, the lack of proof of, thank you, I'm substantiated. And I think that for a lot of parents, that that's increasing, and I know for some students, increasing the frustration behind giving these numbers out, for them, especially taking the time to fill out the reports, parents or students taking the time to fill out the reports. That was one thing that I want to bring up. The other thing, which I've said multiple times, and I will continue to say, on every single website in this district, we as a committee said that you have to have the dashboard accessible to every single community. I have gone on some websites and I cannot find it. I mean, I'm digging, searching, trying to find where it is, clicking for dear life. If I'm, if I'm doing that, people are going to get frustrated. They're, they're literally going to think we're playing games and we're not. It's not an effort for us to, to make sure that they can get this information or access it. And so we have to, and I don't know what, what that has to, what has to happen for that to be filtered out. If you need for me, or a need for us as, you know, school committee members to go on every site and then kind of say to you, these sites are not complying with that, then I will personally take on that mantle of doing that. I shouldn't have to do that, but I will, because we've already asked for it like several times, and it has not happened yet. So I don't know what we need to do. I know that's, I know that each kind of area, I believe each school might operate its own. I'm not quite sure how that works, their own sites. But that is a concern of mine. I'm not sure if my colleagues, Ms. Dougherty?
I, I had a quick question. It kind of goes back to something Ms. Thompson had mentioned earlier about defining a term. When we, and I'm back at the, the center executive summary on page four, you talk about the highest churn rates in schools, and I, I understand it's defined in the paragraph as, we've got a lot of people coming in and out of the school. But is it really more just people coming in? Because I know we have schools that have wait lists. So they're full, right? School starts, then we get newcomers coming in all year round, November, you know, whatever. And they obviously would go to the schools that have the seats. Is that how we're currently doing it? So would you say it's accurate to say the churn rate really has more to do with kids coming in throughout the school year? Or do you find that there's a lot of kids leaving schools too?
And I'm sorry, Ms. Dougherty, which page are you?
It's page four. The fourth one down talks about schools with the highest churn rates.
I don't have my mic on. And I just want to kind of look at, what do we mean by churn rates? Is it, because if you have a school that their seats are full, they've got a pretty stable population, as opposed to a school that's getting new kids in middle, middle of the year? I mean, think of the disruption that is, how that's going to impact how those kids test, how they, you know? So I, I just trying to clarify what that actually means, churn rate.
Sure. So, so I believe that's the mobility rate. I would have to confirm that with our researchers. But I am looking at the schools with the highest rates, so students transferring in and out of school. The Career Academy, I understand why, right? Because you get assigned to the Career Academy. The Cardinal O'Connell, also with our, our students with special needs turn a certain age, and they can, they can come in, sometimes it's half, half-day. So I could see that happening there. Washington Elementary, I know had a large immigrant population, and so that could be, you come into a city, you're not sure where you are, you, it's, and I'm just speculating now, from what I know about school assignment, either you're coming in late into the year, or you are moving, you know, because you, you came, and now you've resettled, you know, in a different part of the city, or moved to another community. So, so that's probably what Washington Elementary and Bartlett are experiencing. And then Lowell High, we have a very, very big high school, and, and I'm sure that churn rate is new students coming in at all times during the year, students leaving at all times during the year, and then dropping out as well when they turn certain ages sometimes.
I think it would be worth just doing a little bit of a dive into that, because when you look at the schools that have the lowest churn rate, the Daley, the Wang, I mean, you've got stable populations there. And I, I just see it as another challenge that we're putting on the school, on the staff, and, you know, the students as well. And then my, my final comment is, I remember reading, and I think it is on this page as well, just a couple bullets down, that the Hispanic Latino ex-students had the lowest rate in terms of advanced course completion. And I'm wondering, is, does that originate with low expectations? Are they taking less advanced courses to begin with, and then also not completing them? I think that's worth looking into, because we want to encourage our students, all students to have access to the most challenging coursework that we can get them to take. That's how I would think about it. Thank you.
And you are absolutely right there, and, and thinking about Mr. Lay's question around our other districts experiencing these same numbers. I asked that as well, my staff and I asked that. And there are other districts with large Latino populations, especially when you're, the, the vast majority of the district, the students are going to advanced placement. They are doing dual enrollment. They are doing everything that students do in a district, but maybe the district is more tailored toward them, right? And so as you were raising issues of why aren't students going, maybe they don't know about it, maybe they're self-opting out because they don't think it's for them. Sometimes we have gatekeeping mechanisms of, you have to score, or you have to get this grade, you know, in order to go in. You know, I was an eighth grade teacher, and I had some students who came in with terrible grades, who had just disengaged, but had the ability to do the work. So I think those are the things we have to think about as relates to advanced placement. And our enrollment number is very low, in addition to our completion rate being low. And that is something that, that the high school is, is, you know, looking at. How, how do students know about advanced placement? How do their families know about advanced placement? How do you get in to the courses?
And I agree with that, Mr. Lay, because I think that a lot of the students didn't know, don't know about the Latin Lysian. And again, we want to make sure that all the, all the, all the things are accessible. I think that, you know, even as we're digging into these numbers, we have to constantly maintain the, the understanding that it's not that they can't achieve, it's we have to figure out how we support them to achieve. And so we, we believe in our Latinx, Latino, Hispanic population, we need to make sure that we're doing our stuff, to make sure that they have the access and they can attain what they need to, so.
And, and it's not that everyone's not working hard and doing their best, right? I think that sometimes there's just things we don't know or don't see. And I think that's the piece that we have to be open to, like, knowing and seeing in addition to working really hard.
I just want to thank you both for this, and Ms. Desmond that had to leave. I want to thank you very much for this information. I think that it's, it's well, it's beyond the time that we should be doing this work, you know, disaggregating this data, because we've seen the numbers, we know that we have a lot of work to do. We also know this is going to be a commitment. This is not going to be a quick fix. And so because we now are, I, I feel like what you spend time on becomes important, right? And so obviously, we're spending time on this, it's important to us. And so I just want to thank you for all the time, and know that there'll be more time that is allocated to this, because it is such an important thing that we're committed to achieving. So I know we've kind of bounced around the agenda, but there was a lot of data. So with that, I am going to call for, yes, motion to adjourned by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. And with that, we adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. But great, I hope you were here, because I couldn't answer.